Second by Mrs. Costa. Dr. McGee will call.
Chairman Borger.
Yes.
Mrs. Kepiscus.
Yes.
Mrs. Costa.
Yes.
Mr. Leclerc.
Yes.
There were no votes taken in closed session. Would you please stand with me for a moment of silence and the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. We'll begin with good and welfare. For anyone addressing the school committee during good and welfare, please begin with your name and address. Your comments shall be no more than five minutes of speaking time and should be in good decorum. Please be aware that the committee cannot respond to you during good and welfare, but may direct you to an appropriate member of the administration team or may meet with you directly after the meeting for further discussion.
Good evening, Wunsucket School Committee, residents of Wunsucket and taxpayers. I am the one and only Mr. Mike, and I live in Wunsucket, Rhode Island, second home reside 420 Robinson Street. Dear Dr. McGee, I am writing to you in regards to a displacement letter that was sent to all early childhood paraprofessionals where the word abolished was used in correspondence. Abolished is a slang term used to describe something that has been completely and utterly destroyed or eliminated. It can refer to-
Excuse me, Mr. Mike, would you lower your voice a bit?
Unfortunately, I'm so sorry, I'm a loud person. I have a microphone right now. I'd be telling the kids in school loud and proud. Can I please finish?
Yes.
Abolished is a slang term used to describe something that has been completely and utterly destroyed or eliminated. It can refer to anything from an object, a concept, a group of people, or even a person themselves. In addition, this term is often used in a derogatory manner, implying that the thing being abolished was not only destroyed, but also deserved to be destroyed. Furthermore, the term implies a sense of finality, inevitability, as if there is no going back once something has been abolished. This usage of the term can be particularly offensive to those who identify with the thing being abolished. In closing, the term abolished is a powerful and provocative way of expressing disdain for something. It is often used in a confrontational or aggressive manner and can be deeply hurtful to those who are targeted by it. It is important to remember words have consequences and can cause real harm to others. I respectfully ask that the Wunsucket Education Department refrain from using a derogatory term when corresponding in writing to employees within the Wunsucket Education Department. Respectfully submitted, Mr. Mike, early childhood paraprofessional, and I'm not done.
Thank you.
In case you all did not pick up the Valley Breeze, the week of July 39th, I'm going to quote one teacher from Globe Park Elementary. Tomorrow, pick up the Wunsucket call. There'll be a story coming out tomorrow. Pick up the Wunsucket call, please. In a note provided to the Breeze, former kindergarten teacher at Globe Park Elementary, she has no problem giving her name, Susan Sylvia, put it bluntly, "Would you invite 25 five-year-olds into your house without another adult present and think you can assure that they'll stay safe with the limited reasoning children of that age have developed?" She also said that students at this young age need help with clothing, shoes, lunch, and even going to the bus at the end of the day. Without assistance from paraprofessionals, these students are put at a huge risk. They need to remember, every minute helping a student with the basic needs of five-year-olds that teachers spends a minute away from teaching. Paraprofessionals spend half of their day dealing with these issues and the other half assisting the academics of students who have yet to be identified as special needs. The unmet needs of these students who have flowed into the first grade. She also noted that this lack of support at such a formative age means that students, teachers, and the community meeting in Wunsucket at large will end up paying the price in the long run. Have a great evening.
Thank you. Anyone else would like to address the school committee?
Good evening. Hello, everyone. My name's Michelle McCarty. I reside in Cranston, but I am a teacher at the Wunsucket School Committee, or School District. I've been here for about 21 years, 22? A while, as an early childhood teacher. So, the Wunsucket call just said everything I wanted to say, but I just want to say, we are keenly aware of our political climate that we're in, of the financial restrictions we're in. So, I'm really just here to urge you to keep our paraprofessionals at the forefront of your conversations as you're thinking about what to do with funding if it comes and when it comes. I've talked to everybody here, most people here, about how important it is and how necessary it is to have another adult who's trained and in the classroom with us in the kindergarten classrooms. The change since I started teaching here to what it is now, the students coming in and the needs they have are much greater than they used to be. So, we're just urging you to keep thinking about us and keep fighting for us because I know when the funds come, I know you have to make big decisions of what to do with them, but these paraprofessionals are so valuable and really, a really good bang for your buck, I think, for how much they do and for what they get paid. So, I appreciate it, and that's it. We just want to keep saying how important they are and respectfully, if you could bring them back anytime you can. Thank you so much. Have a nice evening.
Thank you. Anyone else? Then we'll go, we have no recognitions and announcements this evening, and I'll make a motion to approve the June 25, 2025 open meeting minutes. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Costa. Any changes to those minutes? Dr. McGee will call, please.
Chairman Borger.
Yes.
Mrs. Kepiscus.
Yes.
Mrs. Costa.
Yes.
Mr. Leclerc.
Yes.
Next, I'll make a motion to discuss and approve the consent agenda. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Costa. Anyone want to take any item out of the consent agenda for further discussion? Dr. McGee.
Chairman Borger.
Yes.
Mrs. Kepiscus.
Yes.
Mrs. Costa.
Yes.
Mr. Leclerc.
Yes.
Dr. McGee, your superintendent's report, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So, I'm going to start with personnel matters update. The committee has the list, the staffing changes list, so we are starting the process. We've actually started the process the end of the school year, beginning of the summer, to fill, start filling positions. You see here that we have filled positions. These positions are positions that are budgeted, in case anybody has had that, has that question. When I finish with my report, there's also a listing of the extracurricular positions, transfers, but just focus on the top, which lists the positions that have been filled since the beginning of the summer. So, we're working hard. Principals and staff and HR are working hard to fill as many of those positions as soon as we can. Second item under my superintendent's report is an update on the two-day retreat for administrators. We recently had our annual summer retreat for administrators. We met here in the district at, here at Hamlet in the library on July 7th and July 8th. We went over a variety of things to strategize for the school year. We discussed our destination vision. Dr. Holt and I reviewed that. Dr. Holt did a great job of putting that presentation together. We talked about our MLL vision and regulations. There are, as the committee is aware, there are new MLL regulations, which Ms. McGee will go over with the committee in September to make the committee aware of those, of those changes. We talked about special education data. Mr. Rissow went over STAR data, reviewed the different types of data that our administrators can access. We went over RIDE data and accountability with Mr. Tarianni and Dr. Holt. That was day one. Day two, Ms. Kitchen went through a variety of HR, went over a variety of HR information with our administrators, talked about mental health support, specifically Polaris, which began last year to provide supports for, in addition to, you know, we provide many supports for our students, but this is providing support for our staff, our teachers and staff as well. Ms. Rapport and Ms. Tebow were there to go over some, some legal points, talked about a variety of things. Mr. Quadros went over behavior, behavior teams across the district, district-wide safety and culture and subcommittees. And then we had an opportunity with Hannah Goodwin-Brown to discuss MTSS with our elementary principals, and I worked with our secondary principals to look at their common planning time this year, middle school and high school, and how that planning, that planning time was going to be, to be used. Lastly, an update on the bullying incidents. As the committee is aware, the state law says that I need to present to you twice a year, the bullying incidents that are reported to me through our principals. I don't believe you have a copy of this, so let me, I'm going to make sure I have the right one here. There were two. There it is. By school, and these are incidents from January through the end of the school year. Burnin Heights had zero. Citizens had, had zero. Globe Park had six, five incidents which were, were deemed to have occurred, one which was, was determined that it was not bullying. Harris, both year and Savoy had zero. Hamlet had 13. 11 were deemed to have been actual bullying incidents, two were deemed not to. Villanova had zero, and the high school and Career Center had, the high school had two and the Career Center had zero. So, those are the numbers. I'd be happy to answer any questions on any of those three agenda items. If you have any, any specific questions with respect to the bullying incidents, I can certainly get that information from our principals as what they submitted to me was, was just the number of incidents that occurred and were deemed to be bullying or deemed not to be bullying incidents.
Now, were these, these incidents, was that for a six-month period, a five-month period?
Yeah, January through June.
January?
So, yeah. So, second half of the school year.
Seems like it's a small, small number in comparison to prior years.
Um, they, they do. I, I, I know that specifically Globe Park, theirs went down considerably from last year.
Yeah.
So, that's good news.
I agree.
Mr. Chair, I just have a quick question. I think I asked last time to see how many of the bullying incidences are reoccurring incidences. So, for doing it in like a six-month period, if these are the same bullying incidences that were going on like six months ago as well, and if it is, is there something better that we could be doing as a district to try to stop the reoccurrences from happening?
I, I can get that information for you, Mrs. Costa.
Okay.
For the next meeting, for the, for the meeting in either the first or the second meeting in August.
Okay.
But I, I can, I can pull that together to see which ones have been reoccurring.
That'd be perfect. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Chairman.
Mrs. Kepiscus.
An awful lot of schools are reporting zero. I find that suspicious. I don't know if it means they're being underreported or if students and families do not know how to report. And I know we have a lot of information around our schools about bullying's wrong. I get all that, but do we have enough information on how people can report instances they believe are bullying? Because I understand you can evaluate them and determine that it's not bullying, but for a school to report in a six-month period, zero incidents of bullying, I think there might have been zero reports, but I doubt there was zero instances of bullying. That's just knowing kids.
Yeah, and those are questions more for the principal, really. I mean, I, what I'm, what I'm getting from them is the actual reports. So, if, if there is an incident where a, a student or a parent or a guardian goes to them, they're, they're, they're told by myself that even if they believe it's not necessarily going to be a bullying incident, that, that the form is to be completed because as a part of that process, once they conclude their investigation, then they determine whether or not they feel as though bullying occurred or didn't occur. So, if it didn't occur, it should still be reported. There should still be a, a paper trail because, as I, as I told them recently, the principals, if, if you have a situation where a, a student comes forward and says, you know, alleges that they've been bullied, and let's say it, it wasn't bullying, and then that student comes back again and they are alleging a situation where they're being bullied by the same student, well, now there's a pattern, right? The first time, the first time doesn't constitute bullying, right? Because, because the definition of bullying is it's repeated. So, there still needs to be some documentation. There needs to be a paper trail so that the administrator can, can then look at the documents to say, okay, this particular student came to me and is alleging bullying. I have a documented situation where I conducted an investigation and it was deemed not to be bullying, but now the second time, it probably is. So, that's, is something that I reiterate with the principals, that, that they, they must notify families of the process so that they're aware that this process exists. It, it's not enough for it just to be on the website, which, which it is. They need, they need to, to educate the, the families and notify the families. And if somebody does come forward, even if they think it's not, it still needs to be documented. So, that, I, my, my long-winded answer is I can reach out to the principals. I can, you know, tho, those schools that have zero, I can, you know, as I said to Mrs. Costa in, in, in August, or at least in September, I can certainly report back out from those specific schools who have reported zero incidents.
You know, based on what you've said.
No, I'm-
No, I, I appreciate, I think that would be good because I think we need to do a little bit of a deeper dive into those zeros. I thought it was suspicious when we had a few zeros in the first report during the school year, but to have that many, I counted at least five.
Yeah.
Zeros, that's, that's, it doesn't make sense, not in an urban district like this one.
Like we said, like we've said, it's, could be the report. Maybe the report's got to be changed because it's not identifying what, what you, what you just talked about.
I, it doesn't need to change because on there, it, it, it's, it specifies, there, there are two boxes that are checked, bullying did occur or bullying didn't occur. So, when someone comes to the administrator, whether that's the principal or in some cases the, the assistant principal or, or a teacher, I mean, the, the teacher would then, you know, wouldn't refer the student, but would, would go to the, to the, to the administrator so that it, it's formally, you know, the, 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 the process is formally begun and it's documented. That's how that would work, but the form itself doesn't, doesn't need to change.
Then the report that you gave us maybe has to identify incidents, process that occurs because-
So, it's, so, yeah.
Because how we have zero, because if some things are occurring.
Well, so, it, so it does. It, it lists the total number of, of incidents, and then that is then broken down into two silos where bullying did occur.
Yeah.
And bullying didn't occur. So, if it didn't occur, that means the administrator-
Right.
-conducted an investigation and determined that it wasn't bullying, but it still is documented.
But we have a lot of zeros, right?
No, we do.
Yeah.
Right, yeah. No, we do.
That's probably because it's not getting reported.
Right, exactly.
But I, you know, I-
That's all.
I, that, that's, that's an answer I can't give you. I don't know. That's something that I think would have to be discussed with each individual principal.
Yep.
And I think that's what I'm asking you to do.
And I'll, and I'll do that.
I, I think that's the only way we're going to get to the bottom of it.
Absolutely.
Because if it's that, then either they're not reporting, they're not filling out incident reports for reported instances, or they're not reporting back the accurate figures to you. It's one or the other. That's the only way it could be.
Yeah.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anyone else? Then I'll make a motion to receive and place on file a superintendent's report. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Costa. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Mr. Tarianni, would you give us your report, please?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So, over the course of the last several weeks, we've been converting over to a new work order system. So, this evening, I don't have specific numbers because we've just got it up and running and we're going to work on the reporting feature. So, I expect that my next update, I'll give you the traditional numbers of how many work orders, how many are complete and whatnot. But the work order system is up and running in terms of being able to report items. So, currently, our technicians are working through our elementary schools and they're repairing any student Chromebooks. If you recall, student Chromebooks at the elementary level are just assigned 30 in the classroom. So, we're presently going through all of that fleet, which is about 3,000, and we will move on to the middle schools and the high school. I am happy to report the high schools had its highest percentage collection rate that any administration at the high school has, has had in my tenure here, and that's nine years. So, they got up to 87% returned.
Wow.
So, they are working on the other 13%, and, and they're still making phone calls. They know who has them. So, I think that's actually going to climb higher. So, I, I would like to thank Mr. Ernest and, and the team over there because, I'm going to say it this way, I think they're actually doing what they should be doing, is just calling homes and saying, you haven't returned your Chromebook. I can't speak to what's happened in the past, but I do think it's curious that they've got such a high collection rate with what they're doing. State reporting and data, so our final state report, reporting is concluded. All of the reports and data was submitted as of July 11th, and everything was signed off and certified. In the report, it lists them. This is a screenshot from about a month ago, but all the reports there listed have been signed off and certified with the state. Student registration, K registration, as of today, we are at 286, and actually, when I wrote this, that was this afternoon, as of this evening, they're at 296, student who got registrations for the next school year, which I think is well ahead of where we've been in July of last year at this time. So, I think we are on target to reach, I believe, we said 400. I think there's a very good shot we're going to hit 400 students. Facilities custodial services, we're in the process of configuring the work order system, so I don't have a report for that. Summer cleaning is underway in our schools. The high school team works on the high school. The middle school gets teamed up, does one middle school and then the other middle school in terms of cleaning. And at the elementary level, we take all the custodians and we bifurcate them into two teams, and then we send a team into one elementary and another elementary, and we work our way through the schools because traditionally, elementary schools have two custodians, usually a morning and an aft, or an evening custodian. And if we, we used to leave the custodians in the building, but as a team of two, but they most often would take vacation time. And if, think about it this way, if you have a custodian takes a vacation day, that leaves one custodian to try and move all the furniture out of a classroom and clean it. So, by teaming, it's much more efficient and we, we can go across the district a little faster, so. Transportation, Durham School Services is presently transporting our ESY and summer school students. We had a couple of small issues on the very first few days, but after that, they, they kind of honed in on what they needed to do. So, that's kind of to be expected. That's not specific to Durham, per se. We've already met with their leadership and we've informed them of the expectation that bus routes and transportation information will be available by August 16th, unlike last year where our own superintendent and, and our directors stayed and made phone calls to parents late into the evening. So, they, they know they have to have it ready for the middle of August, they participate doing so. And also, myself and Dr. McGee and Mr. Perrier received an email today that Durham School Services has been sold. They are now a subsidiary of some capital venture group at the national level or international level. They're saying that they expect no changes, but we, we, we shall see. And then school safety, we had a kick, we have a kickoff meeting tomorrow morning. We got into new intercom telephone and clock systems for our schools. We're going to start at the high school and Career Tech Center because those schools have had the outage the longest. And then after that, I promised both your citizens, as a matter of fact, I talked to Ms. Carvalho the other day about it, I believe, we're going to start those school, that school next, and then we're going to focus and maybe even be able to do the middle schools at the same time. I don't have a timeframe as to how long it will take to do the installs. I do think it's going to go into the school year, which will require evening work, but the committee should recall that this new system funded half by us and half by RIDE will basically allow us to have a phone system that is universal across the district. So, you can be in one school and without having to dial out, you could dial to another school and vice versa. So, and, and when the new school comes online, it'll be using the same equipment. So, we'll have one universal system on our network when this is completed. And then lastly, our annual fire inspection reports were completed in June, and we're starting our annual building inspections on Friday. And once those complete, we will take both reports, look through any deficiencies and facilities within, address whatever they can in-house. We will hire contractors for the smaller items, and the much larger items that would fall into the capital plan will be sent to the subcommittee for facilities or the building committee dependent upon what's the best avenue. And that concludes my report.
Mr. Tarianni, are the HVAC systems behaving?
No.
Throughout, throughout the, because you didn't mention those, because I know that's, that's always an issue when we start school year, whether it's heating or air conditioning, and so what's happening with those?
Some of them aren't working, Chairman. McPhee's got some issues. There's a few issues in one of the, there's an issue with one of the units here. There's an issue with one of the units at Villanova. There's an issue with one of the units at Harris, off the top of my head. So, we do have some quotes in. You'll be seeing them come through. The units here, we did learn through all of the work we did, and it's the units, it's not the new equipment they put in. That's all working. It's the existing units where they're not old enough to quite replace, and they're just going through maintenance. But the units here don't service a floor, they service almost like a tower. So, there's like three towers to that side of the building, and then there's a unit that covers this particular area. This one's working here, but one of them's not working on that side, and over at Villanova, one of them is not working on the instructional side there. At, at McPhee, half of the building does not have AC.
Whoa.
Fortunately, my half doesn't. And then at Harris, it's, I, I keep confusing if it's either the cafeteria or the gymnasium. I think it's the cafeteria where there's a unit they need to replace there. And when I say a unit needs to be replaced, it requires them to get a crane. So, we're going through those quotes right now. There will be a facility subcommittee meeting. I'm hoping to schedule one for next week to go over HVAC and some of the boiler things that we've got coming our way in anticipation of the start of school and some repairs we need to do.
Is this, is, is the, is this expend, these expenditures part of our budget, the capital budget? Where is that? How are we going to pay for this? By the grace of God.
Haven't figured that out yet, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, all right. How about furnaces, the heating systems? I mean, is that something we have checked during the summer to make sure that when we hit the fall, that they're up and running? Is that what happens during the summer to make sure they're ready?
Yes, we have one, we have two furnaces at Harris. One of them is down, needs to be replaced at Burnin. We are doing as many repairs as we can without replacing the entire boiler because of the fact that we're closing the building. We have, we have the furnace at Citizens, there's two. One is working, one is not, but we're hoping that one, that one's a backup, similar to Harris. So, we're, we're hoping that that will stay working. There is an issue at one of the Savoy ones that, that we're waiting on a quote for, for one of the circulators. And then there are four smaller circulators at Coleman that unfortunately, I think the cost was 12,000. I can't remember if it's already gone through or it's coming at the next meeting, that needs to be replaced there. We were hoping not to have to do that because we're closing that building as well, but unfortunately, it's something we have to do because we, we have at least one more heating season.
Right. Okay, that sounds good. In terms of Durham, you mentioned that new ownership, nothing's going to change. Is that in personnel or actually in the, their ability to provide us with meaningful transportation and, and meaningful schedules? Is that, is that been contemplated by the new ownership or is it too soon to tell?
I can read from the email. I received an email today, I think along with Dr. McGee and Mr. Perrier, from Mr. Steven Schmuck. Good morning, another warm one today. We are very excited to share the news we've been sold. And then to paraphrase, our new parent groups happy with our current leadership team. In case you are worried, we are still Durham School Services with the same teams and local partners supporting you. If you have any questions or you would like to contact us, please do so. Thank you.
Okay. So, it's too soon.
I, I, I hope that schmuck is wrong.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear you, Dr. McGee.
I said I hope that schmuck is wrong.
Yes, sir. I, 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 I think we're going to see the same from Durham that we've seen in the past.
Okay. No. Anyone else have any comments?
Yes, Mr. Chair. I have a question first of Ms. Tebow. Are we restricted to questioning the director as to what's in their report, or can we ask something outside their report but within, within their purview? I don't want to create a problem. but within, within their purview? I don't want to create a problem.
It's just on.
It makes me a little nervous if the agenda is limited to the report, to ask something outside the scope of the report itself. Is that, I don't have the agenda in front of me. If you do, and you can confirm that that's what it says, then...
The agenda simply says, "Technology Facilities Report."
Right. Out of an abundance of caution, I would probably not veer outside the scope of the report.
No problem. I'll speak to Mr. Nortorianni after the meeting. It's not that. It was just a question for information that people are asking me about. Thank you.
So are you saying, Ms. Ms. Tebow, that the, his report has got to be delineated even more on the agenda? That it should be broken down, every single topic that he's got in the report?
No. Isn't it true that the committee typically will link the report itself to the agenda when the agenda is posted?
Yes.
Right. So that essentially merges into the agenda. So anyone who wants to know what topics he's going to be discussing as part of the report can click into it. So there isn't really a need to list it out in that level of detail as long as, as it's linked. But because there is no other information provided as far as topics, other than what's in the report, for that reason, I would, I would keep it to the report.
Okay.
Does that answer the question?
I guess. I'll say it as best I can. I guess.
I think you ask it and find out.
Exactly. Anything else, Ms. Kapiskas?
No. And don't be nervous. It's, it's just informational. It's, that's all I'm going to ask about. And I'm not going to do it on the record. I don't want to create. I suspected the answer was going to be, we're stuck with, I don't mean that the wrong way. We're stuck with the scope of what's in the report. So that's what I'm going to do. I'm going to refrain and ask you outside the meeting.
Now I'm nervous, but okay. I'll just sit here patiently. Thank you, Mrs. Kapiskas.
Any, anything else?
No, thank you.
I'll make a motion to receive and place on file a technology update. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second, Mr. Leclair. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Mr. Perrier, would you give us your financial report, and we'll make sure we stick to the report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. For the school committee, this evening is the May 2025 fiscal update. Currently, the district is projecting a $407,000 surplus as of June 30th, 2025. On the revenue side, due to higher than anticipated billings, Medicaid revenue was projected to be over budget by $1.664 million. I'd like to commend Mr. Nortorianni, Ms. Morell, and their team on really upping our Medicaid reimbursements this year, I should say for fiscal year 25. And I look forward to additional Medicaid reimbursements going forward. I'm not sure what's going to happen with that, what's going on with the federal level, but we're hopeful to keep those Medicaid reimbursements going strong in the next year. The expenditure side, our regular salaries are $1.02 million under budget at this time, and when netted with the employee turnover allowance of $1.05 million, this puts overall salaries $30,000 over budget for the year. Substitute salary line is $222,000 over budget at this time. Substitute pay was slightly increased due to substitute employees moving up in step and receiving more money as they close out the fiscal year. Medical expenses are currently $1.205 million over budget. We had a, kind of a rough year on medical, and we'll see, we'll see what happens as we close out through June. But as a reminder to the school committee, we are, we do have $1 million in O P E B funding, as well as $2 million in a medical pooling account for any potential overruns. It doesn't appear we're going to need to tap into those at this time to close out on fiscal year 25, but whatever we don't use, we'll certainly roll forward in the next fiscal year. Pensions are scheduled to come in over budget at this time. I think I've touched on this a few times. There was a late change in the pension rate by legislation, which led to unscheduled increase in expense. Overages and purchase services are due to us being unable to fill some budgeted positions throughout the year. These expense overages are offset by the savings from our salaries. Transportation was currently adjusted up one more time. Bottom line is, we're going to be paying $4.6 million to ride, to transport students across the state to both, all the out-of-district placements that we have. That's not including the three additional buses that we hired from them, which is another $300,000. That's a separate item. I'm just talking about the transportation that we paid for out-of-district transportation. So we're going to land at about $4.6 million in total for out-of-district transportation for fiscal year 25. That's a, it's a huge number, and that number has gone up almost exponentially over the last few years. We were hopeful that there'd be some changes made at the legislative level this year. Those changes did not happen. So I think we're going to be looking at something very similar as we go into next fiscal year. Last but not least, our tuitions to private sources are over budget by only $699,000. And I say only $699,000 because it was much higher projected earlier this year. Ms. Morell and Ms. Gerard, they did a great job closing out, bringing students back, and saving the district some money as we close out the fiscal year. So we're very happy to see that in finance. That's my update on fiscal year 25. I have a few things to say about fiscal year 26, but I'll take any questions on fiscal year 25 first.
Just one question. Last month, you, we were showing a net surplus for this year of 99,000.
Yep.
Well, we're up to 407. Can you tell us generally what, what created the increase?
Absolutely. As, as I kind of talked about at the last fiscal update, we did have some purchase orders that I thought were slightly overcome, over encumbered. As we've moved through our closing process for the fiscal year, we've been able to close some of those P Os. And additionally, we've had some closes for, we've been able to close some open tuition purchase orders that were open. So as we move through the year and close up, or move to end the year, and we close these purchase orders, we will recoup some of that money back to the bottom line. So.
Since you spoke of recouping, we still have one more month. These are as of May, right?
Absolutely. This is as of May.
One month.
One more month. That's correct. I, I, I wouldn't see any additional expenses coming in. In fact, I would anticipate maybe even a little bit more of a surplus coming as we continue to move through our year-end close process, posting our final accruals for payroll. That's all captured in this update. But yeah, we're going to get everything on the books and closed out, and hopefully move on to fiscal year 26 in a good position.
Any questions on 25?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I have a follow-up question on that surplus thing.
Absolutely.
I, are you okay?
Mm-hmm.
I was an accounting major for exactly one day in college. So to say I don't really understand the accounting side, I, when I ran, I told Mr. Borje that that's his bailiwick, and he has to explain it to me. But now I'm looking at you, and I'm going to ask you to explain. That $407,000 in surplus, is that actual money that we have, or is that just a figure on a balance sheet?
It's, it's a projection as to where I think we're going to be closing out as of June 30th. So yes, that is actual money. But again, it's just projected still at this time. We still have things to close out. There's year-end journal entries that we need to make to get all of our expense on the books, to finish our open purchase orders. Oftentimes, we have invoices coming in into August and even September, just because they're behind on sending us invoices that are really expenses for fiscal year 25. So there are maybe some expenses out there that I haven't captured yet in our books. So, you know, as we move through July and August and then into September, we still may have some fluctuation as to where that final June 30th number ends. Because if I, for example, have a repair coming in, the repair was done on June 27th, but the invoice doesn't arrive in our office until, until August, I need to bring that expense back to the proper fiscal year. That's just, it's, it's proper, proper accounting to get it in the right fiscal period. So we still may have some movement on that number. But that number that I'm projecting right now is actual surplus. Yeah. That's not a made-up number. That's number, if we were to end the year, that would go into our fund balance and roll forward into next fiscal year to use at our discretion.
And then my second part of that question. Does that mean that some part of that 407K potentially be used to recall our early childhood?
Absolutely. Hundred percent, without a doubt.
So I'm still allowed to hold out hope that that's going to happen?
Well, I can, we can jump right into 26. I can tell you what we're doing to correct that problem, if you'd like.
I don't know if we can do that because it's not in your report.
Oh, it's fiscal, right?
But it specifically says 25.
We can talk after the meeting.
Okay.
But I, I'm hopeful. You can do it if you want. I don't care. I'll take the heat.
It's part of my fiscal update, I would say. Every, everything's correct. It's fiscal. Everything's connected to everything. We're just going to talk about fiscal 26 very briefly here. I, I don't think, really, looking around, there, there's been a lot of changes. I don't know if you've been keeping up with the news, but there's been a, a lot of activity at the federal level, particularly at the beginning of July. Currently, it's looking like Title II, Title III, and Title IV are all off the table going into this fiscal year. And the budget that you approved back in, in April, that anticipated that funding coming in. Because this happening, funding being pulled at, and this is beyond the 11th hour, it's, it's being pulled in the current fiscal year that we're operating in. This is unprecedented. This is, this has never happened before. So what is this costing the One Socket Education Department? It's, it's north of $1 million right now, easily. A million dollars in funding has evaporated overnight, and we're stuck figuring out how to, how to, how to make that work. Because we're at the point now where the time has passed for, for any things that we can change position-wise. The deadline for that is May 31st. So everybody we've committed to, we have to commit to. There's no more changes as far as personnel goes right now. So what do we do from here? There's going to be an amended budget. Mr. Reso has been working tremendously hard on Title I. We submitted a Title I budget after getting the allocation tremendously late. You, normally we get allocations in, in March. We didn't get our allocations for Title I until, what, June this year? And that, and that goes for all the C R P. Unprecedented stuff here. So she busted her butt to get that Title I budget in, and the first thing that they do is turn around and say, "You got to do it again." Because we utilize Title IV funds in Title I. Every year, we transfer our Title IV funds that are, are going away into Title I to support Title I. And what do we support in Title I? There's, there's, there's a lot that we support in Title I. And at the top of that list is early childhood TAs. So we're, we're very hopeful, and we had to go redo Title I again. We had to put together a budget that doesn't have that additional funding from Title IV in, which is almost a half a million dollars. So there goes a half a million dollars right off of Title I right to start next year. And we're still fighting to bring all these positions back. And I think that's what I want to get to here at a bottom line, is that we're not done working through these budgets. But the committee needs to know that changes are happening in a timeframe that they never happened. So every day that goes by, hey, we get a new piece of information, we're going to work on working it into the budget and coming up with a solution that hopefully is going to allow us to recall every, everything that we've laid off. That's, that's the hope. But the reality is, we've lost quite a bit of money. We've lost quite a bit of money. And this coupled with the loss of ESER funds, there's, we've gone quite a bit, we've gone the wrong way as far as federal funding has gone. So the plan here from finances is to continue to take in this information, put together another budget, and bring it to the school committee probably in the first week of August. I think that's what the timeframe is that we're looking at right now. We may need a special meeting. I apologize for that. But I would like to get a new budget in front of the school committee at the beginning of August, and with that budget, we'll have a final determination on what we're going to be doing personnel-wise.
Is it possible for the Titles, Two, Three, and Four to come back?
Absolutely. It's possible that they come back. But right now, the district is not going to be entertaining that. Those are, those are off the board right now. So we're going to go back, we're going to look at what we need to lose, cut out of Two, Three, and Four, and then figure out, hey, is there a way that we can maybe absorb some of this into the general fund? Maybe we can come up with some new ideas as far as that goes to help, you know, ease the burden. Again, a million dollar plus loss is a million dollar plus loss. We're going to put our heads together. We're going to prioritize some things, and we're going to come back to the committee with a new budget in August. And we're going to execute that budget, because that's what the finance office does, is execute budgets. So I'm, I'm hopeful that we can continue to solve these problems as a district. We're going to dig, and we're going to go as hard as we can to come up with some solutions. But the reality is, things are happening here that have never happened before when it comes to funding. And looking at what's happening, I, I don't know what's going to happen next. I don't think anybody does. So we're going to work diligently to come up with some answers, and we're going to present those answers to you at the beginning of August. And those answers won't include, right now, any funding from Title II, Three, and Four. That, until I have a grant award notification in my hand saying that we have this money, I'm really not going on anything else. It's hearsay. Everything is hearsay at this point. And I think preparing a budget on funds that might not be here is, is a terrible, terrible idea and terrible decision. Now, now we do have some fund balance to work with. The school committee has spent some fund balance this year, funding the new school, but we still have some fund balance available. So that could be an option as well. It's never good to build a budget on fund balance. That's unsustainable. But we may be able to find some things that we can offload into our general fund, maybe one-time purchases that we're looking to make, and say, "Hey, we're going to use fund balance to make these one-time purchases this year." And then that will free up funds for other things that we deem that we need to bring back. So it's, I, I'm not looking for pity here, but this, this is, this is madness, what we're dealing with. And not just One Socket, not just Rhode Island, everywhere in the country. This is unheard of. Doesn't mean we're going to stop working. We're going to keep working, and hopefully come up with a solution that's going to satisfy everybody. That's what the bottom line is with this. And like I said, we'll, we'll reconvene in August. We'll talk about it then, and we'll have some potential solutions laid out for you.
The fund balance that Mr. Perrier is talking about is sitting on the balance sheet, and that deals not only with fiscal 25, but it is available for fiscal 26. So in terms of agenda items or any fear of discussing that, fund balance, which is part of his report, affects both the past, the present, and the future. And it's appropriate to discuss that because how we're going to use the fund balance is going to depend on what happens in the next few weeks and the next month. That's how it works. And as he says, we, it's not an easy road this year because many of our, our expected revenue sources may, may have dried up. We don't know yet.
Thank you, Mr. Perrier. And I did want to say, I was very happy to give you the opportunity to talk about fiscal year 26. And if anybody wants to file an O M A complaint, the correct spelling of my name is on the website. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Kapiskas.
Anyone else?
That's why we love her.
Mr. Perrier, was that the end of your report? Thank you very much for that. Dr. McGee, roll call.
Chairman Borje.
Yes.
Mrs. Kapiskas.
Yes.
Mrs. Costa.
Yes.
Mr. Leclair.
Yes.
Next, we go into new business. The first item is a discussion and approval of Rhode Island Student Assistant Services Agreement. I'm making a motion to take this off the agenda. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Costa and Mr. Leclair. Dr. McGee.
Chairman Borje.
Yes.
Vice Chair Burke's not here. Mrs. Kapiskas.
Yes.
Mrs. Costa.
Yes.
Mr. Leclair.
Yes.
I'll make a motion to discuss and approve the position change of the Assistant Principal at Bothier Citizens Elementary Campus to Dean of School Improvement. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Costa. Dr. McGee.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the committee. I am presenting to you, you have this link here under New Business, Discussion and Approval to Change at Bothier Citizens. Committee is aware that at Bothier Citizens, there's a principal and there's an assistant principal. We have, over the years, unfortunately, gone through some assistant principals that have not worked out. And in light of the applicant pool, the current applicant pool, pickings are slim. And that's a, that's a, I guess that's an educational term that I'm using there. But they're slim. So I have had some conversations with Mrs. Carvalho, Principal of Bothier Citizens Campus, and we have discussed moving for one year, a, from a, from an assistant principal position to a dean.
from a, from an assistant principal position to a dean position. Now, this dean position is not the same dean position as we have at our high school and our middle schools. This would be a dean of school improvement. As you're aware, Citizens Pothier is a comprehensive support and improvement school. So as, as part of the plans there, their, their school improvement plan is, is a little bit more comprehensive than your, your, your typical school improvement plan. And one of the things that we have talked about that Mrs. Carvallo has reinforced is, is, is the need for someone like, like this dean position to assist her with school improvement, which the, the, the hope is that this person can assist with a variety of things. You have the, in your, in your link here, you have the function and the essential responsibilities of, of this position. I know Mrs. Carvallo is here this evening. If you have any questions regarding this, this position, and again, this would be a, a one-year position. The, the dean positions historically have been one-year positions when they first were established at, at each of the levels, the high school and the middle school. This would be a, a union position as well. And as I said, Mrs. Carvallo is here. If you had any questions for either myself or Mrs. Carvallo.
Ms. Kapiskas?
I just have one question.
Be ready to jump right in.
No. I have a lot of questions tonight. I'm sorry. But it's not even necessarily Miss Carvallo, but I guess it's more general. Is this position such that they don't need an administrator's certificate? And I assuming, I'm assuming that's so because you said they, it'd be a union position.
Correct. They, so this, this position does not require an administrator's certificate, nor do the, the other dean positions at the middle school, middle schools and the high school.
So then presumably we have a wider applicant pool?
Presumably we would, yes. Exactly. Yes.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
What happens in year two? You said this is a one-year position, and so they're going to do this year. What happens next?
We're, we're going to assess, we're going to evaluate how that position.
Okay.
How it works. If it's, if, if we find that it's effective, then, you know, we may look to furthering it, continuing it beyond that year. And if not, then we have the, the option to go back to an assistant principal position.
Okay. Any other thoughts, questions? Dr. McGee.
Chairman Borje.
Yes.
Mrs. Kapiskas.
Yes.
Mrs. Costa.
Yes.
Mr. Leclerc.
Yes.
Next, I'll make a motion to discuss and approve bid number 26-01, Nursing Medical Supplies. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Leclerc and Mrs. Costa. Mr. Perrier and Dr. McGee.
In front of the school committee is bid 26-01, Nursing Medical Supplies. This is the nursing order, nursing supply order for the district for the year. And this is what's presented to the school committee this evening. You know, as the year goes on, sometimes we have some additional items that we buy, but the majority of the supplies are bought at this stage of the year during the bid process.
I assume these are part of the budget they've been budgeted for?
Yes, these are part of the budget that you approved back in April. Yes.
Any questions? Dr. McGee.
Chairman Borje.
Yes.
Mrs. Kapiskas.
Yes.
Mrs. Costa.
Yes.
Mr. Leclerc.
Yes.
Next, I'll make a motion to this, to discuss and approve bid 26-02, Hot Water Tank Upgrades. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Leclerc and Mrs. Costa. Dr. McGee and Mr. Perrier.
Bid 26-02, Hot Water Upgrades. These are for hot water tanks at both Hamlet and Villanova. I would like to point out that the State of Rhode Island Office of Energy Efficiency will be paying for this 100%. And there will be no cost to the district for, for these upgrades.
Good. That's good news. Any, any thoughts on that? Dr. McGee.
Chairman Borje.
Yes.
Mrs. Kapiskas.
Yes.
Mrs. Costa.
Yes.
Mr. Leclerc.
Yes.
Next, I'll make a motion to discuss and approve bid 26-03, School Dental Services. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Costa. Dr. McGee, Mr. Perrier.
Bid 26-03, School Dental Services. This is for the hired dentist that comes in and, and checks all the kids' teeth. We do this every year. We do a bid every year, and this is the results of the award.
Is this for all kids?
Uh, yeah, I believe so. I, I'm not actually sure.
Eight to 12?
Yeah, I'm not sure who the dentist looks at. I, I, I know, I believe it's just the elementary kids. I could be wrong on that. Middle school as well, we cover. But yeah, this is for the...
I think it's throughout.
It's through.
I think it's across.
Okay. So, and the same with the medical, too.
If they go.
Yeah.
Right. Any questions? Dr. McGee.
Chairman Borje.
Yes.
Mrs. Kapiskas.
Yes.
Mrs. Costa.
Yes.
Mr. Leclerc.
Yes.
Next, I'll make a motion to discuss bid 26-04, School Physician Services. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Leclerc and Mrs. Costa. Dr. McGee, Mr. Perrier.
Bid 26-04, the physician side, complimentary to the dental, a bid, and these are the results.
So that's for all the kids as well?
Yes, yeah.
Anyone? Dr. McGee.
Chairman Borje.
Yes.
Mrs. Kapiskas.
Yes.
Mrs. Costa.
Yes.
Mr. Leclerc.
Yes.
Next, I'll make a, a motion to discuss and approve bid 26-05, Custodial Supplies. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Leclerc, Mrs. Costa, Dr. McGee, Mr. Perrier.
Mr. Chairman, I ask that we table this bid. This bid was not prepared in time for the school committee's review this evening. I will be bringing this bid back at the next meeting. So a table, and we'll resume this at the next meeting.
Then I'll make a motion to table this item. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Leclerc, Mrs. Costa, Dr. McGee will call.
Chairman Borje.
Yes.
Mrs. Kapiskas.
Yes.
Mrs. Costa.
Yes.
Mr. Leclerc.
Yes.
And that's the, the last item on our agenda. So I'll make a motion to adjourn the meeting at 7:57 PM. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Costa. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned.